I never get to do that. So, welcome everybody. I'm glad to see such a big crowd for School Board Appreciation Month. Thank you for all being here. We're glad that you're here anyway. We're looking forward to hearing from you in public comment. I call this meeting of the Prosperant Bennett School District order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been newly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. Mr. Beavers, would you please lead us in our invocation?
I will. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day, Lord, and just everything that you've given us. Father, thank you for the day of rest that we had today, Lord, but also thank you so much for the leadership that we have received in the past in this country, Lord, and today, being able to honor Dr. King and remember his leadership and his perseverance, Lord, and thank you for allowing us time just to remember those things. Father, today we also pray for our country as there is just unrest, Lord. We pray that you would allow us all just to take a deep breath, Father, and practice patience at this point in time and understanding, Lord. Also, Father, we pray just right now for the sickness that has hit the world, Lord, that we pray for the people of this district and of the world, Lord, that are sick right now. Father, we pray that they would heal quickly, their symptoms would be minimal, and no long-term effects of that. And Father, we also pray for our district, Lord, just everything going on, Father, with our students and our teachers. We pray for safety, that you would just be with us at this time, Lord, specifically this evening for the meeting that we're about to have, Lord, just for wisdom and discernment as we lay out the different business that is before the district. And Father, we just thank you for your hand of blessing, and we ask that you keep it on prosperity. In Jesus's name we pray.
Thank you, Bill. Surprise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we're heading into public comment session of our agenda. We've set a new record for people signing up to speak, so I'm grateful that we have so many people interested in bringing their thoughts before the district. I'm going to read our standard comments, and I'm going to make another request, and then we'll dive right in. "We now move to the public comment session of our agenda. The board welcomes comments from citizens who've completed public comment cards this evening, which are accepted from 6:30 PM to 7:00 PM and are not transferable to other speakers. Please be advised that the information shared in public comment is not an endorsement of the information shared by the presenter and solely provides the opinion of the individual speaker, not the district. Please keep all public comments related to school district governance and operations. If you have a specific concern related to an employee of the district or a specific student issue, you're encouraged to utilize the district's grievance procedures provided in board policies DGBA local, FNG local, and GF local. Each grievance procedure allows for an individual to redress grievances with the Board of Trustees." And this is something I'm going to bring up in a minute. "Additionally, if there are five or more individuals that would like to speak on the same topic, you may choose to appoint an individual to speak on behalf of the group as provided in board policy BED local. Finally, remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any items that are not properly posted on the agenda." Okay, so we'll move into that public comment. I will say, we've got a great number of people today. We're going to try to limit comments. We want everybody to have an opportunity to speak. If there is an opportunity for some of you to say, hey, we're going to say the same thing and have a spokesperson that wants to do that, that would be fabulous, but we don't want to curtail anybody's right to avail themselves of the public forum of this meeting. So we're going to ask that we take two minutes for each of you to do that, and we will begin, and we'll go through that process. Did I miss anything else? Okay, okay, well, let's go ahead and get started. Oh, I will, and it is helpful to remind you, we're grateful that you are here. We're grateful that you feel strongly enough that you speak to the board. We, in this, as I said in the introductory comments, we do not have an opportunity to enter the dialogue with you. That's not allowed by the Texas Open Meetings Act. It's not something that's on the agenda, so we cannot interact with you other than say thank you for bringing your opinions to us. So with that, if you want to talk to your neighbor and see if you want to find a way to consolidate, that's great. If not, why don't we start with Nicole Pala. And when you come up, please give us your name and your address, please, and we'll keep a record for the two minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, and Dr. Ferguson. My name is Nicole Pala, and my address is a matter of public record. We have five kids vowing for prosperity, and we pulled our three youngest children prior to the start of the school year. I want you to understand the reason- you to understand the reason we pulled them is due to the change in policy regarding mask-wearing, social distancing, and sanitizing. It seems the district is under the impression that many families didn't return to school because they were afraid of COVID. This is simply not the case. The reasons our kids didn't return to school is because we don't want them to wear masks and be subjected to this policy. We will not cover up their beautiful smiles and send them into a smileless environment, a sanitary, socially-distanced, unfamiliar environment. We do not think this is normal, and we do not think it is okay. It's time for masks to go away. Masks have not been shown to be safe, and there are numerous studies showing that the accumulation of carbon dioxide inside a mask whilst being worn reaches dangerous levels. By mandating masks, we are putting our children in this environment for upward of six hours per day, five days a week. It is unsafe. When we had COVID through our home last year in September, out of seven of us, only three family members got sick, my two high schoolers who wear masks in order to attend a Prosper High School, and my husband who wears a mask to go to work. That's right. The only family members who came down with COVID in our home are the mask-wearers. The unmasked family members did not get it. We all quarantined together for 14 days, as is required, and we did not get it. Our homeschool community meets in person, and we do not wear masks. The kids sit right next to each other, and there have been no outbreaks in this community. During the November 16th Board Meeting, Dr. Ferguson presented an inscribed gift and held this truly great message. True leaders have always been selfless. They've always been servants of the people first. Did you hear that? People first, not Governor Abbott, not the TEA, but the people. We know you are great leaders. You didn't happen into the positions that you are currently holding by mistake. You are there because you are great leaders, trusted members of our community, and simply awesome individuals who are willing to volunteer your time to benefit our students. Now, put the people first, not the governor's orders first, not the TEA's recommendations first. Put the people first. We voted for you, not Governor Abbott, not the TEA. We did. And you took the oath of office and swore to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution, and that includes protecting our constitutionally given rights. By allowing voluntary mask-wearing in our district, people who want to have their children wearing masks will continue to do so. That is their right, and we do not want to take that away from them. We just want the right for our children not to wear them, because that is our right. So, we request you make them voluntary. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pala. Thank you very much. Robert Douglas. Mr. Douglas, again, please introduce yourself and your address, and ten minutes will begin. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Robert Douglas. Address is 991 Tumbleweed Drive. We are here today to let you all know that we unenrolled our three children from Prosper SD at the beginning of the school year. Most people think that we unenrolled them due to being afraid of the virus. The fact is, nothing could be further from the truth. We unenrolled our children because we did not want them subjected to the tyranny of mandated face masks. We moved to Prosper in 2012, just before our oldest started kindergarten. It was our plan, then, that all three of our children would attend Prosper SD kindergarten through 12th grade. My wife and I did not hesitate to unenroll our three kids when it was announced that masks would be required to attend school. On our neighborhood street alone, there are four families that have unenrolled their children due to the mask mandate. Before I go into the negative consequences of wearing a face mask, I would like to point you to a statement made by the Executive Director of the World Health Organization, Dr. Mike Ryan. Dr. Ryan advised against wearing a face mask. His statement was, "There is no specific evidence to suggest that the wearing of masks by the mass population has any potential benefit. There's some evidence to suggest the opposite and the misuse of wearing a mask properly or fitting it properly." Another infectious disease epidemiologist, Dr. Maria Van Kirkhoff, from the WHO recommends, quote, "In the community, we do not recommend the use of wearing masks unless you are sick and as a measure to prevent onward spread from you if you are ill," end quote. Face masks come with many negative consequences. Number one, shortness of breath and lightheadedness. According to Dr. Lily Barsky, "Any activities that result in expulsion of air, such as talking, singing, and exercising, can result in the accumulation of carbon dioxide between the face and the mask." Number two, headaches. According to Dr. Biakodi, "Long-term wearing of masks can result in prolonged repeated episodes of headaches." Number three, dermatitis. Some people's skin may break out, and scarring around the area where the mask is worn may result in some cases. Number four, weakened immune system, perhaps the most troubling of all symptoms on the list of doctor warnings. The immune system can be greatly weakened by low oxygen levels in the tissues, according to Dr. Esteban Kosek. And I believe I'm at two minutes?
That was it, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Jennifer Douglas. I think we know your address, Ms. Douglas?
Yes, I live where he lives. I'm just gonna finish. If you dig into the CDC data, you will find that 200,000-plus deaths from COVID in this country are people that died with COVID and not because of COVID. Only 6% of the COVID deaths are actually due to COVID. Legally, Governor Abbott's mandate is simply a request and not a law. I encourage all of you to truly think about what Prosper ISD is supporting by requiring face masks. We were hopeful that our district would be less like sheep following the masses and more like pester ISD. Furthermore, there are religious exemptions that allow for the not wearing face mask. I point you to U.S. Code 42, Section 2000A, where it states that "All persons shall be entitled to the full and equal enjoyment of the goods, services, facilities, privileges, advantages, and accommodations of any place of public accommodation, as defined in this section, without discrimination or segregation, on the ground of race, color, religion, or national origin." Based on what the Bible says in Genesis, Chapter 1, Verse 26 and 27, "We are made in God's image, and we believe that covering your face is hiding the likeness of God." Please be aware that if any exemption, medical or religious, is offered to any student, then those exemptions should be offered to all students. Any less than the above is considered discrimination. Based on everything that we have presented, we are asking that Prosper ISD immediately reevaluate your position on mandating masks to attend school in person, including all school-related activities. Along with many other families, we will only consider sending our children back to school when this policy changes. Until then, we will vote with our actions, and our children will remain unenrolled from the district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Emma Douglas. I got that right, Emma?
Hi, I'm Emma Douglas, and I'm currently in eighth grade. I attended Prosper Schools from kindergarten through seventh grade before masks were unfairly mandated to students and staff members. This year, I switched to homeschool due to the unfair rules that were set this past year. I enjoyed attending school every single day. I was elected to be a Hope Squad member for the 2020 through 2021 school year. Because of the mask rules that were set, I didn't get the opportunity to help save the lives of students with depression and suicidal thoughts. I also have a deep love for the game of volleyball. During the season, I would look forward to practice and enjoyed every second of encouraging my teammates. I dedicated lots of time and effort into working very hard and loved watching team spirit thrive on and off the court. I'm missing out on all of those experiences. According to my research, mask-wearing causes anxiety, severe depression, failing test grades, fear of people, panic attacks, insecurity, and the list goes on. This has to stop. I would like to thank Prosper SD for a wonderful eight years of academics, friendships, memories, sports, and so much more. I refuse to attend a school that is requiring their students to wear masks. Wearing masks violates HIPAA, the Americans for Disability Act, the Civil Rights Act, and our constitutional rights. As a district, you've chosen to violate my rights on a very basic level. In closing, I would like to leave you with a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. "There are two types of laws, just and unjust. One has a moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws."
Thank you, Emma. I'm afraid I'm not gonna get this last name right, but Christine Chapanelli? Close?
Good evening. My name is Christine Chapanelli, and my address is a matter of public record. I stand before you tonight as the mother of two Prosper ISD students, as well as an educator of 20 years. I have multiple degrees, including a master's degree in the education of children from New York University. Parents, educators, and doctors are increasingly reporting mental health complaints in children because of mask-wearing. A recent study based on an online registry out of the Paul Ehrlich Institute illustrates that these concerning effects cannot and should not be ignored. In just one week, there were over 48,000 reports on the registry regarding children who are forced to wear masks in school. Accounts of irritability, headaches, difficulty concentrating, less happiness, newly acquired anxieties, reluctance to go to school, malaise, impaired learning, and fatigue were the most concerning. These statistics alone are incomprehensible, let alone the missing long-term data on important developmental areas such as language, play, retention of their learning, communication, sensory development, and empathy. The negative effects of compulsory masks on the quality of life for children are too important to disregard. It is not too late for us, for Prosper ISD, to change course and do what is right by giving parents the choice, because where there is risk, there must be choice. I leave you with a quote. "Never, never be afraid to do what is right, especially if the well-being of a person or an animal is at stake. Society's punishments are small compared to the wounds we inflict on our soul when we look the other way." Dr. Martin Luther King.
Thank you. Mr. Cochran.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm back again, Pat Cochran. Probably all know my address by now, so I'll skip that. I just wanna bring everybody, I'm gonna change direction a little bit and bring everybody up to speed on the Level 3 grievance that I filed. It was unanimously denied 7 to 0 by this board, and my ask was threefold in doing this when I filed the grievance. It was to make masks consistent with vaccination policy, since that's the only mandatory medical intervention required by school systems. Second was to look at and evaluate safety data on hand sanitizing and the use of hand sanitizer, since there's been 212 recalls since, really, since November with the most recent data, and there's been 1,585 adverse events related to that. And then, as well as publishing material and safety data sheets on cleaning agents that teachers, staff, and children be exposed to in the schools. And then, third was to lay out a roadmap in conjunction with parents to identify when we can get back to normal. So, I wanted to find out, hey, can we work together to identify when we can get back to business as usual? So, let me just make it clear that this board denied all those requests: parental involvement, being consistent with established law, and just even looking at the data. And there were two questions that came up. After all the data presented, after all the studies that are presented, all the logical consistency that I threw into 15 minutes that I could best get into it, two questions. Do I have a medical background, and how did I get to the Level 3 grievance process? So, let me unpack that real quick. Who are you to be presenting this data, and how did you get here? Those are the questions I was asked. There was no refutation of the data. There was no argument against the data. There were no other follow-up questions around anything I presented, just those two questions. I think that's pretty telling. I've said it before, and I'll say it again. It's not about a virus. It's about something else.
Thank you. Very good. Nathan Wheeler.
Hi, my name is Nathan Wheeler, and I live on Smokebrush Street, 416. So, I've come to tell you what my feelings are on masks and how it has affected me. So, it's hard to make friends with them. I cannot make friends as easily because I can't hear them or read their expressions, and it's really hard. It's also hard to breathe in them. I could barely breathe in a mask, and it felt like someone was holding their hand on my mouth. And it was also really hard to learn with my teacher, like, with the mask in. So, it's harder to learn because you can't really hear them. And the heat was also the worst part. The mask, like, made everything really hotter. I've been in Prosper ISD since kindergarten, and I'm in fourth grade. And so far, this has been my least favorite year. I'm done.
Yeah, thank you, Nathan. I appreciate you bringing that to us, Nathan. Thank you. Very well said. Another one I'm not sure I'm gonna get right. Melissa Vilemizer? Vilemizar?
It's close enough. It's me, sorry.
Please give us your address, too.
Is that a matter of public record? I'm a Prosper resident. I'm on Cannington.
Okay.
I prepared something so that I don't forget anything.
And you weren't here. I just wanna make sure, you know, we're going down to two minutes.
Cool. Let's talk fast. So, I wanted to come here today to share my experiences. So, my son was a student in Prosper ISD, and I pulled him out of school. So, he did kindergarten in Prosper. He loved it. He loved Stuber. It was heartbreaking to have to pull him out of school this year. I want you guys to understand that we didn't do so because we were scared of a virus. We did so because I was so concerned about the emotional damage that could be done because of the environment that he was going into was really concerning for me. He currently attends a school where he is not masked. He doesn't sit behind Plexiglas. He plays on the playground, on the playground equipment with his friends, and has normal childhood contact. It's a fairly large school. That school has had zero cases. It should be a hotbed for cases, but there's not. These kids, I don't wanna get into the science of it, but I think we've seen that it's not affecting kids the way it's affecting the elderly. These kids deserve a childhood where they're not being emotionally traumatized by their school situation, right? Like, you're sitting at your desk. You can't leave your desk. You can't play with another child. You have to sit behind Plexiglas. It's, I mean, and shout out to the young man that just spoke, because it is insane what is happening to these kids, and shame on us for not doing something about it. And that's why we are all here today to show you guys, this is a really big deal. My son is a healthy, happy, vibrant boy, and I am so grateful that we made the decision to pull him out. It was a really, really hard decision for us as parents. I know that other parents share my sentiment, and I wanna put him back in Prosperity. We moved here one year ago to go to these schools. We want him here. We love the staff, the administration, everything, and so it's heartbreaking to see this happening. I do feel like it's psychologically damaging to our children, not only that I think that it's actually physically damaging them as well. There's some studies that are now coming out that people have been masked long enough that we can start to tell what's happening. I'm disappointed in the district, which I was once happy to be proud of. Until the district starts standing up for the children that you guys claim to care so deeply for, we're gonna exercise our right to choose where we put him to school, and it won't be here. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Lucia Jenkins, please. Okay, I think that's what that says. Amy Gibson. Okay, I'm not sure about this one. Karen Cower?
Yes.
Did I get that right? Materially correct?
Hello, everyone. I attend, I meant, I go to Winsong Elementary School, and I love it. I want to start by saying that I have rules at home, which I follow because they are made so when I get older, I can have good habits and make better choices. A new rule at school about wearing masks is a rule I don't like. I am so sad during recess because I can't tag my friends, because we have to maintain six feet distance. Some friends wear masks, and I don't know what their face looks like. In the classroom, there is one kid on each table. That makes me sad that my best friend sits all the way from me in the corner. I don't know what teachers look like since their faces are half-covered with masks. I don't, I know they smile, but I can't see their smiles. Oh, one more thing. When you wear a mask, you are putting back the carbon dioxide you just breathed out and can make a person dizzy. That doesn't sound healthy to me. I don't like this new rule of wearing masks if we don't want to. It makes no sense. You didn't need to hear from a kid like me. Adults already know masks are not a good choice. That's all I'm gonna say for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing your concerns to us. And our last one is Megan Pilkington.
Hello, my name is Megan Pilkington. I live at 2150 Paladura Drive, and I have two children in the district, a seventh grader. Hello, my name is Megan Pilkington. I live at 2150 Paladura Drive and I have two children in the district, a 7th grader at Rogers and a 4th grader at Folsom. I was recently on a parenting forum with 5,000 other Texans that's dedicated to fighting for our children's medical freedom when a psychiatrist in Austin posed a question asking what districts in Texas didn't enforce masks or allowed masking to be at the discretion of the parents. She has pulled her children out of their local public school and is currently homeschooling as many are due to the overreaching and emotionally detrimental mask mandates. She was looking for hope that her children would be able to return to public school, seeing after this year she was willing to move her family if need be. The following was my response to this parent. Thank you for posing this question as I am here for the same reason. I started teaching 1st grade in Prosper in the spring of 2006 and saw firsthand how amazing this school district was. We moved our family from Frisco to Prosper in 2014 mainly due to the district and all it had to offer. We feel so fortunate that PISD opened in August and offered both in-person and virtual learning options as we have friends in other states that schools only open virtually while others have still yet to open, doing a huge disservice to their communities. While our children have been attending in-person school, we have decided that unless masking is done at the discretion of the parents moving forward, this will be their last semester to attend. I honestly feel a physical ache every morning when I drop my children off at school and see all the teachers with their smiles covered, students having trouble making friends because of their facial expressions or masked, and sad kids wanting to go alone and distance into the building. I've spent the last six months of my life listening to countless sources of information on this virus and the efficacy of masks. I've spent hours upon hours listening to podcasts from OSHA mask experts, reading reports done by scientists, watching videos made by doctors and medical researchers who have no money to be made by presenting scientific evidence that goes against the mainstream narrative. It appears that we have become a Plexiglas society that bends over backwards to make adults feel safer at the expense and mental well-being of the next generation. I personally know many families in our districts who have kept their children out of in-person learning this year only due to the masking requirements and the additional sanitizing chemicals that are being liberally used, even though the virus transmission from inanimate services is extremely small. I'd be interested in the results the district might receive if they did a survey on why families that chose virtual learning made that choice and what it would take for the parents to send their children back to school. We will not stay in Prosper and need to pay thousands and thousands of dollars a year for a school system that has become like a prison system. We will move anywhere and do anything we can to protect our children, provide them with the healthiest and safest environment possible. It appears my beloved Prosper may be in our rearview mirror by this summer.
Thank you, Ms. Pilkington. Thank you all again. Very grateful that you would take the time out of your schedules to let us know your thoughts on this matter. Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay at the meeting as long as you would like, but at this time we're going to move into the rest of the agenda. Starting into the consent agenda, looking at the minutes from the prior meetings. Have you guys had a chance to look at the board packet and review those meetings, I mean those minutes?
Yes, sir. We have two board meetings that we have the minutes from, the December board meeting and then the special meeting on January 11th.
Okay.
And then we have an updated enrollment report. As of Friday, we were up to 19,448. So we've grown about, almost 200 students since December 18th. It's not uncommon for us to grow over 100 students over the break, but this is, I believe, the largest amount we've ever grown during the two-week break. So the people continue to come.
Okay.
And then you'll see the updated class waiver list with the amount of new students who have joined Prosper ISD over the break. And we have about 600 students who have chosen to come back to in-person learning that originally chose virtual learning in the fall semester and have now made the choice to come back. And so with that, it did force a decent amount of class-sized waivers that you see in front of you.
That's great.
And you'll notice that most are on the west side of the district. They're Stuber and Windsong.
Okay.
And then we have a construction update. I believe Fernando will start the videos for us.
Well, before you do that, any questions on the class-sized waivers? I know you had a chart that showed how many we've already done. So we've done 134, is that right?
Yes, this will bring us to that. Yes, sir.
Okay. This is where Dr. Watkins would normally remind us that there's no correlation between class size.
Yes, there's no magic. There's never been a magic formula that said that at 22 students, everyone learns amazing and at 23, they forget how to learn. But we do recognize that it is, that our schools are growing extremely fast. And like I said, particularly at Stuber and Windsong, everything west of the tollway has continued to grow at extreme rate. Both Stuber and Windsong are over 1,000 students, which is why we need Elementary 14 as quick as we can. But yes, you are correct.
Okay.
There are a few class-sized waivers.
Well, I know we're going to make a motion on this in a minute, but any more questions on that before we move to the construction update? All right. Hearing none?
As we transition to the next video, I'll just point out to the board that I talked to Poe Construction last week. And while it's, there's not a lot vertical there yet, we are actually about four weeks ahead of where we were with Hughes at this same time a couple of years ago. We know that one got started late as well, so we're actually ahead of schedule compared to where we were a couple of years ago.
Is this the one that we expedited?
What's that?
Is this the one that we expedited?
Yes, yes. Yes, sir. Brian Elementary is definitely on schedule. As you can see, it's moving well.
Josh, do you fly those drones?
All right.
So we're comfortable with where we are?
We're comfortable where we are.
Okay. Any questions on any elements of the consent agenda? If not, we will take a motion to approve the entire thing.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Deborah. Second?
Second.
Oh, thank you, Kelly. All in favor? Okay, great. Okay.
Okay, on the education agenda, the first item we have for you is a seeking approval on a staff development waiver. This allows us to petition the state to have 2,100 minutes of additional professional development. You know, most of our people are on 187 contracts. Our students go to school 175 days. And so this allows us to utilize professional development time that we think would benefit our staff. And while we adopt the calendar, you know, we've been doing that two years in advance, we have to do this every year. We have to ask for permission to seek these waiver moments every year. So this is just the item to do that.
Okay. Any questions or concerns with that item? Not, we'll entertain a motion to approve that staff development waiver?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jana. Second?
Second.
Thank you, May. Is all in favor? Okay.
Okay, and then this is just an update from Tasby. You know, they send these updates out quite often. This is hopefully the last one from the last legislative session? So this is from two years ago. This are statutes that take effect on January 1st of this year. And so we're finishing up the last legislative session and the new legislative session began last week. So we'll see what it awaits for us in this session.
Good. Didn't look like anything particularly substantive that I saw.
No, most of it is statute language.
Yeah. Any comments or thoughts on Update 116, Tasby? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve. That's changes? Thank you, Bill. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Deborah. All in favor? Great. Okay, business.
All right, Ms. Fulmer. Good evening. We have a couple of slides here tonight to talk about our financial outlook at December 31st of 2020. See if I have turned it on. Okay, first, the investment report for this month. We, as of 12/31/20, our weighted average yield, which is the interest rate of all the investments taken together for the portfolio, is .12 of 1%. So that is almost zero again. You see, it's even dropped since prior month. One thing I wanted to point out is that December of 2019, a year ago, our interest earnings, our weighted average yields was 1.64. So it's just plummeted with that. As of May of 20, to give you some scale, it was .51. So we understand that, you know, when COVID hit, the economy did some, several things. At first, initially, interest rates went sky-high and then they immediately plummeted. The low rates are good for issuing debt and we're issuing debt this week, so that's good. Although those rates, the 30-year municipals have ticked up a little bit to 1.5-ish. It was in the 1-2s when we sold last time. So those rates are still good. But this investment earnings are what go into the general operating fund and they do help support our operations for school districts. And they're one of the few things that's outside of House Bill 3. It's not tax collections and it's not state funding. So to have this drop is one of the uses and want to make sure that our legislators understand that a strong fund balance for school districts is absolutely vital because in a single year, you can go from earning $200,000 a month to $20,000 a month. And those are significant changes that we really didn't have any way to see coming. The general fund portfolio is 67%, if you see on the bottom chart. And our market, the overall portfolio just for general fund is $166 million at this time. Tax collections come in in December, January, February. So right now, general fund is going to get really heavy and then we'll spend that throughout the year. This slide shows all funds put together. So it's got the bond funds, child nutrition, debt service, et cetera. We're at $248 million. This time last year, we were at $328 million. This shows the financial institutions and you can see tax pool. Again, our tax collections go directly into tax pool. So they don't linger in the bank account. They earn interest rate from the moment we get them. But that's why that one is always a lot bigger than the other ones. This chart here shows the general fund only. $166 million, as you see, this time last year, $149. That's 11% increase. We know our fund balance increased as well on that one. And sorry, I thought there was another one for investment. We look at revenue by source. So I've got some notes here. This one is just for the general operating fund, $110 million current year compared to $93 million this time the prior year. So our percent increase is 18% over prior year to date, which is strong. Our overall budget went up about that, so that's not unexpected. If we look at the difference, though, especially on this chart here, if you look at the pie charts between 2019 and 2021, a lot of times we look at the numbers and not the pie charts here. But you can see very clearly in the green on the pie chart on the right that the state portion of our funding is significantly higher. That's going to be to tax rate compression and the state is bearing more of the burden of our overall funding. So far, year-to-date, if you compare our budgeted revenue for current year to collected, we're at 61% completed and that is right there where we were prior year. So that gives me a good feeling that our budget and actual collections are tracking right where we would expect them. If we look at tax collections, the current year, original levy percent collected is 7.73% overall compared to last year. That's a strong increase. And what that means is when you have a levy, your levy changes literally every day throughout the year. So we look at the original levy and then you compare that to your budget because that's what you start out the year with. That's what you estimated when you made your budget for your operations. So we compare it to that and so tax collections this year are strong. If you look at the chart, this is what tax rate compression was designed to do. And we can see as we go along, but it really looks like it's having the desired effect. The tax collections are literally line over line with prior year, which is what the compression was intended to do, which was to stem the increasing property values from being too much of a burden on the taxpayers. We look at ag rollback. Last year, we had a large increase in that one. We do show three years because they're just very different. There's nothing about ag rollback that we can predict. And as you see, current year, it's in the yellow, the small little bit. We only had a little bit in September, $100,000. We haven't had any in October, November. So we'll just keep monitoring that. Before House Bill 3, the ag rollback collections were something that you could sort of keep for operations. It doesn't work that way. It's still going to be offset with state funding. But it's good to know when these are coming in and what effect they're having.
Does the demographer speak into ag rollback at all when they look at trends and what's happening?
It's hard for them to because sometimes the investors will buy the land, you know, so far in advance. So they can track it a little bit with vacant developed lots, but it's hard to know when it kicks in, yes.
So this chart here just shows expenditures by major object. And we like to look at this because your payroll is the largest by far expense in your budget. But also your services, and we like to see how those are tracking compared to prior year again. Current expenditures are 67 million, 20% increase over prior year. Payroll is as we would expect. Services are actually lower than we would anticipate because one of the largest services we have is the custodial contract. And we know for certain, we contract out our secondary campuses. We added two this year. And so we know that that is a very strong thing. We haven't cut back, obviously, on custodial. We've added. And so these are just some areas where we're monitoring, but our expenditures in some areas have been lower than expected. And so we're trying to figure out if those are going to increase, if things change in the spring, or if they're going to remain the same. Expenditures by major object again, if we look at this with the pie charts, compared to budgeted, we budgeted $192 million, year-to-date, 67 million. 35% is complete year-to-date. That's tracking right along with what we did prior year at this time at 31%. And it's slightly below prior year, that .5 doesn't seem like it'd be a lot, but when your $192 million budget, that is a significant decrease. Budget to actual comparison, this is for the athletics fund. There's not a large budget in the athletics fund, but their cash flow is right where we were prior year at this time. Last year, this time, that was before COVID. But you can tell on the second group and the fourth group, the actual revenue compared to year-to-date and the actual expenditures, the athletics department has done an excellent job of keeping their expenditures in line with their decreased revenue. We wouldn't normally expect decreased revenue, but we understand because of the times that we're in right now that that's the outcome. But this was just a very positive result for this year. Child nutrition fund. We knew we were running out of our fund balance. This is the first month. We're showing a negative result of operations year-to-date. If you look at the actual revenues and actual expenditures, you can see they're significantly less than prior year. Budgeted was to be a lot more than this. But their actual expenditures are right in line with their revenue. So they have done a very good job of really keeping the staff down, the cost for payroll and for other expenditures down, knowing that this revenue was very tight. If we have a significant deficit in child nutrition by year-end, state law requires us to cover that with general operating funds. Debt service fund. Year-to-date, $36 million cash flow. We are building up reserves. We are building up reserves right now. Our debt service payments are in February and August, just twice a year. So you'll see us build up to that, then we'll have a reduction, and then in August, the payments again. Last two, the construction on the financial report. I was very happy to see the live-action video, because I know this only shows we've spent 18%. That does not reflect actual progress on the construction. Really, this is the, has the longest delay of anything on the project will be when we actually write checks to go out the door to the contractors. And Bryant Elementary School, you can see very different, at 49% expended so far. And that concludes our report for December.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Very good, as always. Thank you very much. Will you need a motion to approve the financial and investment tax report? Thank you, May. Second? Thank you, Jan. All in favor? No budget amendments?
No budget amendments. The next one is the purchase of furniture for Bryant and Reeves Elementary Schools. Ms. Lewis and Ms. Bate and others have worked together to put this out to bid. This is one of those where we throw all of the items we would desire out there and let multiple bidders in, and then award based on how they bid certain products. And so this is the amount that we're requesting. I was pleased that it has not gone up significantly from the last time. So this is, I believe, a valid number that we can outfit these schools appropriately.
And this is for, is the 1.4 per school or total for both schools?
This is total.
Oh, wow.
Yes.
Yeah, I always thought FFNE was more than that, but maybe I'm thinking about middle school or something.
We've done this differently, to be clear. There, last year, for instance, we combined furniture and technology together, and so it was a larger FFNE expense. We needed to get out in front on technology this year, because it was so difficult to procure Chromebooks and so forth. And so we did that separately last month, and then, so this is furniture. There will probably be one more FFNE that will revolve around some curriculum, textbooks, things that we need to purchase. So we did divide it out this year, but this number is a very good number.
Great. Okay, questions or comments on that? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, Jan. Second? Thank you, Debra. All in favor? Very good. High school graduation. No, no, did we do that? Did you skip?
Yeah, sorry, that thing was out of order on ours right here. We'll get to that in a second. This is the consideration of approval of purchase of the Mayhart property that's on First Street. One of the things that we desperately need in this district is office space and warehouse space, and there are not many options. So many school districts around us, I always say, have invested in old grocery stores or things like that to warehouse. We don't have any old grocery stores here in Prosper, too. But this property came available recently. It has a warehouse piece and an office piece. We are literally out of room here, as you know, on these hallways. And so this being so close by, just a few blocks over and centrally located in the district, we felt this was an opportunity to help us long-term, and not having to lease a space, but actually purchase a space that would be ours for years to come. And so we bring that to you and recommend that this evening.
Good. I know there's been some question about the cost to remediate it and to make sure it's looked at all bad and...
Yes, we have already done some due diligence. The next motion for you to approve this would be to ask approval of an amendment to the contract to allow Huckabee to help us design some of the things we do. There are a couple things, to be clear. The building was built, I think, in the early 80s. And so it's got some issues. We're not going to be able to just move in tomorrow. If we were to purchase it, we're going to have to do some updating. And so we've been evaluating what exactly that looks like, because we certainly don't want to move in and then a couple months later have to redo some spaces. Want to make sure we're being diligent with that, with our work there. And so there will be some costs, but I don't think it's cost prohibitive.
Good. Any questions on 7D? Good, glad we're able to get in there. Anybody?
This is just to purchase the...
Yes, this is just a purchase. You would just be approving a purchase at this point, and when we would come back with a budget later for any updates that we would need to do.
And we don't really, do we know yet how many, how much space that, I mean, is that going to be 50% of this space, or we have any idea?
It's, I forget the actual square footage. There's about 5,000 square feet on the office portion, and then 7,500 on the warehouse side. So it's, we think between cubicles and offices, depending on how, clearly, there's a million different ways you could do it. But offices, you know, anywhere from 20 to 35 people, depending on how we utilize the space, what exactly we use it for. And then the warehouse, we, right now, we are just out of space in the maintenance building as is. And so this would provide, again, 7,500 square feet of usable warehouse space for all the things that we continue to purchase and need to support our schools.
Okay. Accept a motion on 7D?
I have another question.
Okay.
Will there be room for growth in this facility later? I mean, we won't, like, move into it when the time comes and be already out of room.
Sure, I think, so there is a potential for growth, but there is also a, what we're purchasing is 3.8 acres, I believe. The building only sits on about an acre worth of that. And one of the things that we need, just more parking space. There's certainly the potential to add a building in the back. So there are a couple of different ways, I think, that we could, in the future, grow into this space and use it efficiently.
Other questions? All right, hearing none, I will accept a motion for 7D.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Bill. Second? Thank you, Jan. All in favor? Great, okay. What's this, a 7E?
Yes, this would be, as I stated earlier, to engage Huckabee, who we work with all the time, right, to help us. There are a few things in there that we need to just update, but there are also some questions related to what we need to do there to help them. This would be, so that they could help us make sure we are efficiently using the space, getting the most out of it.
Good. Okay, saw that in the packet. Any questions or comments on that?
It's not going to cost us what it cost to design a school, is it?
No, 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 no. The contract is a percentage, yes, of the overall cost, so it should be substantially less than that, yes, sir.
All right, we'll need a motion for 7E.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Debra. Second?
I'll second.
All right, Kelly. All in favor? Good. Now, it's time for high school graduation.
Yes, high school graduation. We sought bids to prepare for graduation. The media package for that, you can see there was a note on what we spent in the past. And then now, having two graduations instead of just one, the recommendation there would be, yes, the recommendation would be Media West, based on our experience with them, and then the, again, the pricing.
So we have used them?
Yes. We've used them several, on several occasions, and they have been great to work with.
Just for reference, what did graduation last year cost?
So graduation last year...
X, X, firework?
Yes, it was about the same as, and I don't remember exactly. Ms. Fulmer might remember the number exactly, but the media package was similar to what we spent at the Star in 2019.
So around 81?
Yes.
Yes, I remember being surprised at how much it would cost to put media in a large facility, outdoor facility like that. But yes, it was, we pulled the 2019 graduation, just because, I know, for it being more of a traditional, ongoing plan, rather than going back to the Star Center. So this would be the first time that they're trying to create an environment for the two high school graduation that we would replicate every year. I know last year was just so very different, and everything we did was, the time window was very short, too. So we had, it was, you know, difficulty to even decide what to order, much less, could people provide it in time?
Okay.
Is there anything that, if our intent is to have it at the stadium going forward, or there are investments we could make into things where we could, we wouldn't have to go do this every year? It's like we could own?
Yeah, it's a valid question, and one I think that we continue to have to look at. I mean, certainly, it's difficult, because the screen, obviously, we have a lot of things that we already use there, the screen and the investments that we made at the stadium complex. What they provide, what this package entails is, obviously, the sound system, but also the production, everything to the streaming online, all of that is kind of a turnkey solution, because our technology staff, at this time of year, is also overburdened with everything else that's going on, much less trying to prepare for that. And the sound system that we use alone, I don't know for sure, but I'm guessing the sound system alone costs probably what we're paying them. As you remember, it was a, it's a massive situation. The staging that goes along with it is a part of this. And so it is something that we need to continue to evaluate.
So who did it last, who did the, who did it last year?
Media West, same company. Yes, sir, same company.
Okay, other questions, comments? All right. Will you need a motion to approve this request proposal? Thank you, May. Second? Thank you, Jan. All in favor? Okay, Media West. Okay. Can I get a motion? It's executive session time. Can I get a motion to go into executive session? Thank you, Bill. Second? Thank you, Debra. All in favor?
Before you guys move, I do have one other thing. I would be remiss. This is Board Appreciation Month, and we have, Fernando's going to key up a video here, but I would like to say, before he starts that video, normally on this night, we have students here performing, and unfortunately, we didn't get to do that tonight. But I do want to, I hope you know, and certainly, our campuses appreciated you already this evening, but the job that you do and the willingness that you have to support the school district, we know that is often a thankless job. I know that school board member comes with a huge salary of $0, but you give of your time freely to support our students and staff. And so before we go to executive session, I'd like you to see this short video just expressing our appreciation.
Well, that's very thoughtful. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, as always, we will go deliberate, do what we do in executive session. We will come back at her for any actions that need to be taken. You're welcome to stay if you want to. Thank you.
Okay.
We're coming back from executive session and we have a number of motions to move through. Number one is number eight A, consideration of possible action on approval of any professional contract personnel to be employed in the status of current professional personnel. That's the hire, to be hired list.
Make a motion to approve the new hires?
I'll second that.
Second, Debra, all in favor? Okay. We need a motion for consideration and possible action on approval of resignations received.
I'll make the motion to accept the resignations as listed.
Thank you, Jana, second.
I need to...
Thank you, Kelly, all in favor? Great. Number C is the consideration and possible action on approval of any professional contract personnel to be employed and status of current professional personnel and authorization for their superintendent to issue contracts during the months of February through August. This is to give Holly that authority to pursue those contracts.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Bill, all in favor? Second. Kelly, all in favor? Now, D...
Is it Kelly?
Oh, Kelly's got it?
Yes. So, I move that the board find that Bronbacher did not have good cause to abandon his employment contract with the district.
Okay, we have a motion?
A second.
Second. All in favor? Kelly. And then our last one is that we consideration and possible action on granting the superintendent the authority to grant paid leave beyond the requirements of the FF-CRA. That's something we have talked about in executive session.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Debra, second. Thank you, Jana, all in favor? Great. With that, the business of the board is concluded. Can I get a motion to close this session?
I'll make a motion.
Close it. Thank you, Bill, all in favor? Thank you. Good night.[1766.90][1766.90][END OF TRANSCRIPT]